Railroad meeting number 57 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
we thank you for the men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces. We thank you for their defending our country in times of war and for their preserving our country in times of peace. We thank you for their courage, their faithful discharge of duties, and the sacrifices made, including for many the ultimate sacrifice of the giving of their life. May the faithful departed rest in peace, and may the living whom we honor receive our undying gratitude, and may this day live out its purpose of being an instrument of world peace. We thank you for a special group of veterans who graced us with their presence in Columbus this past week, the Tuskegee Airmen, who were living legends of the skies. We pray that they were enriched in each other's company and also know of our gratitude for them. As we near this time of Thanksgiving, may we be like the first pilgrims and be grateful for the blessings received despite the hardships incurred in life. We thank you for entities such as Catholic Social Services who respond to hardship with hope and help, and in a special way to the senior citizens in our community. We pray for members of City Council as they embark upon this meeting, may they receive your wisdom and counsel to promote the well-being of this fine city. We ask this in your name, amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
So move.
Say her second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. There any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
There any resolutions or announcements by members of Council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you, President Ginter. I do have several announcements. I wanted to highlight the November 7th, and I want to thank Father Watson for articulating the work of the Tuskegee Airmen. The Martin Luther King Junior Center for the Performing Arts held their Legacy Awards Ceremony. Living Legends of the Sky, the Tuskegee Airmen, they recognized eight honorees throughout the state of Ohio, documented, original Tuskegee Airmen from Ohio. Among those were three honorees from the city of Columbus. Hilton Carter Jr. of Columbus, Paul Menefield, and Donald E. Elder. And I certainly wanted to, and will mention all of their names while I'm here, Thomas Austin from East Cleveland, Charles I. Williams from Dayton, Ohio, Harold Brown from Hilliard, Ohio, Charles Fester from Zinyo, Ohio, and Robert L. Harvey Senior. We certainly deserve all of our praise and recognition for overcoming, for many of them, overt racism and segregation, to really serve our country and preserve our freedom. And so saying, they certainly deserve our respect and admiration for their work. Want to also mention certainly the, at Council on, I believe it was Thursday, or Friday, I'm sorry, that Council was a participant with the mayor as we honored all of our veterans and well-deserved recognition for preserving our freedoms. Second, I'd like to discuss very quickly, or remind our Columbus residents about the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund. The program provides financial assistance to eligible homeowners for home improvements. This pilot project is intended to help us, to help up to eligible homeowners invest in exterior home improvements, up to $15,000 per home located within the boundaries of the Southern Gateway Initiative, which has been established as High Street on the West, Morale Avenue on the North, Parsons Avenue on the East, and Hosack Avenue on the South. To apply for this new project, contact Reverend John Edgar, Pastor and Executive Director, Community Development for All People at 614-645-7349, or 946 Parsons Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43206. And then finally, the Community Relations Commission wants everyone to put on their calendar and get involved with the upcoming Dr. Martin Luther King Junior events headed by the CRC. They are accepting, currently accepting registrations for the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Oratory Contest, Arts Exhibit, and Civil Rights Tour. Also, mark your calendar for the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior March and Program on January the 21st, right here at City Hall. For more information, visit the CRC website at CRC.Columbus.gov, or call the office at 645-1993. Thank you. That is all that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein.
President Ginter, no resolutions, but just would like to thank all the veterans that have served this country to make it what it is today, and to just how proud I am for their service, to put their lives on the line, to protect us as Americans, and to give us the gift and the privilege of freedom and liberty. Thank you.
Thank you. President Pro Tem Miller. Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Paley.
I don't have any resolutions, but I would like to put on notice that I will be holding a Public Utilities Hearing to review the proposed 2013 rates for water and sewer and stormwater on Wednesday, November 14th, in City Council Chambers from 5:00 until 6:00 p.m. The meeting will be broadcast live on CTV, Columbus Cable, Channel 3, and those wishing to address City Council regarding this issue can fill out speaker slips at City Hall between 8:00 a.m. and 5:30 p.m. on November 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Ginter. I do have a couple of announcements. First, on this Friday at 4:00, we'll have our third quarter hearing on our financials. Also, November 12th through the 18th is Dine Originals Week, when Columbus residents and guests support independently owned and operated restaurants in central Ohio. Independent restaurants define the culture, character, and culinary diversity of our city. Dine Originals Columbus helps sustain these independent restaurants and make them more viable. For this year's listing of participating restaurants, their special Dine Originals Week menus, and more information, visit www.dineoriginalscolumbus.com, or call 228-7441. Also, the Ohio State University College of Dentistry is offering free dental exams and x-rays at Student Board Screening Day on Wednesday, November 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. No appointments are necessary and no fees will be charged. As part of their clinical training, the College of Dentistry students will give one free dental exam and two free x-rays under faculty supervision to participants who are at least 18 years of age and in good health. No appointments are necessary. The services will be offered at the first-floor dental clinic at Postlethor Hall located at 305 West 12th Avenue. For more information, call 405-0018. And lastly, presented by Columbus Public Health, presented by Columbus Public Art, 2012 Looking Ahead, a Forum on Public Art in Columbus will include panel discussions with artists and experts on public art. The forum will be held November 16th and 17th at the Columbus Museum of Art, 480 East Broad Street. The event kicks off on Friday, November 16th, with a reception from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and on Saturday, the 17th, at 9:30, and the forum is free. If you're interested in getting more information, please contact www.columbuspublicart.com. Oh, and lastly, on Saturday, November 17th, Ohio State's Diabetes Research Center presents a second Global Diabetes Summit. This free event will be held at Veterans Memorial located at 300 West Broad Street. Registration begins at 7:00, and the summit will offer free diabetes and related health screenings, healthy cooking and exercise demonstrations, panel discussions, and workshops. Celebrity guests are Dominique Wilkins, who's an NBA Hall of Famer, and Oscar Joyner, President and CEO of Reach Media, which produces the Tom Joyner Show. While this event is free, registration is required. To register or to get more information, visit go.OSU.edu/GDSCommunity. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Are there any comments from the city auditor, city attorney? I don't think the municipal court is represented. Just wanted to make sure there weren't any pieces of legislation, any requests by members for anything to be taken off the consent agenda. If not, may we have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So move.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2156, 2227, 2257, 2276, 2307, 2320-2012. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance is 2350 and 2358-2012. Zoning Committee ordinance is 2384 and 2412-2012.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 191X, 196X, 194X, 195X, and 197X-2012. Finance Committee ordinance is 2147, 2337, 2357, and 2379-2012. Development Committee ordinance is 2296, 2352, and 2378-2012. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 2425-2012. Technology Committee ordinance is 1954, 2277, 2312, 2316, and 2324-2012. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance 2270-2012. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2332, 2349, and 2351-2012. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1924, 2206, 2225, 2230, 2268, 2271, 2299, 2300, and 2383-2012.
I know we have one, thank you, we do have one consent agenda speaker this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to Council Chambers. You have signed up to speak on ordinance number 2378-2012 in support of that ordinance. If you'd share your name, address, any organizations you represent, you have three minutes.
The North London Airchair Facility for Vacant and Abandoned Property, 1612 Arlington Avenue, Nate Wilkins. Speaking in support of this, 2378-2012, I've got a couple of questions here. You talk about NSP1, and I think it's like solely on different projects. You have several amounts here. If you can clarify, what was the $14,000 for, and the $121,000 and some cent? And at the end, you have down here an emergency of $150,000. The three questions I want to ask, this money, I guess is for projects in the Columbus, Ohio area, and I would like to see some of this money to be used for projects in the neighborhood, such as properties that's been sitting revitalized, or some nonprofit organizations, like for Habitat Humanity, or any other construction line of work. Or some other entities around town can stabilize some of these struggling neighborhoods, such as the North London area, or such other parts of the central Ohio area. I'm in favor for $150,000 for this, maybe a little bit more over the years to come. If you have any questions, feel free. Thank you again.
Mr. Wilkins, thank you for coming down this evening. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Councilmember Klein?
I would just ask Mr. Wilkins to work with Deputy Director Branton, if you don't mind working with Mr. Wilkins, and reciprocate to get the answers to the questions he proposed. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda this evening? Not, I then entertain a motion to pass and proceed.
So move.
Say her second. Clerk, call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
We will now proceed with a second reading of 30-day table of emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you. I have one ordinance this evening in finance. It's ordinance number 2393-2012, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to amend a contract with Tipping Point Renewable Energy for the installation of a solar roof and associated purchase power agreement for the fleet maintenance Groves Road facility by assigning rights to another party, Tipping Point Energy, C O C, P P A, S P E hyphen one L L C, which has been known as S P E as I keep talking and discussing it, and extending the deadline for the completion of the system, and to declare an emergency. A purchase power agreement is an agreement whereby S P C will own, operate, and maintain a photovoltaic PV system on the roof of 4,200 Groves Road. The city, in return, will agree to provide a license agreement on the roof and to purchase the electricity produced by the system. This agreement will allow the city to have the benefit of clean energy without the upfront costs of purchasing and installing the system, or the long-term cost of maintaining the system. This P P A demonstrates the city's commitment to reducing its carbon footprint, as well as committing to be a leader in the growth of the solar industry, especially in central Ohio. This project has experienced two external challenges which have caused delays, therefore requiring the extension of the commercial operation date from January 1, 2013, to July 1, 2013. This is really going to be a very interesting project on Groves Road, and again, it's a green project. We're excited to be working with Tipping Point and moving this initiative forward. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Four pieces of legislation in development tonight, but three of the pieces have to do specifically with Franklinton. The first is the creation of the Franklinton TIF, which is 2283. There's another piece, that's the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan, which is 2315. And then there's a CRA Amendment, 2434, that helps amend the boundaries to fit the plan. And this really, the three of these in total, and I'd like to approach them in total because they all have to do with one another, pose for the rebirth of Franklinton, which is Columbus's oldest neighborhood. And it's really in large part of the work of the residents and the current business leaders that this all came about, and the leadership of the council, leadership of the mayor, that we're going to see the renaissance of the Franklinton area. And the TIF in particular, I think, is going to be the crux and the cornerstone of the transformational change, because it's going to provide the infrastructure necessary to rebuild Franklinton. So the first piece is 2283, and we do have a speaker. I'll read the legislation and invite the speaker, who is Jim Sweeney, Franklinton Area Commissioner. 2283, to create the East Franklinton Tax Increment Financing Area on certain parcels of real property, to declare improvements to those parcels to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, to provide for the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, to provide for the distribution of the applicable portion of those service payments to the Columbus City School District, to establish municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of the remainder of those service payments, and to specify the public infrastructure improvements to be made on the TIF parcels that directly benefit those parcels. So, Mr. Sweeney? If you just could re-identify yourself, even though I've identified you, and state your name and any organizations that you're representing, and you have three minutes.
Thanks for coming down. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Klein. I am Jim Sweeney. I'm the Director of the Franklinton Development Association. I also am a member of the Franklinton Area Commission. I'm here to speak in support of all three of these resolutions, and to applaud and thank the mayor and the city staff for being, for the great leadership and vision on this. These are very important components, the revitalization of Franklinton, something that's been coming for a very long time, and we're very satisfied and thrilled to be moving forward on these fronts and future fronts. So if you have any questions for me, know that we're supportive. The Area Commission voted to support it. The Development Association supports all three of these. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Sweeney? I do have a question. What impact, positive impact, do you think the TIF's going to have in Franklinton?
We think that the TIF, and we are not experts on the TIF. We've been learning a lot about TIFs from the Economic Development Staff and from other places, but we really believe that the TIF is going to be a strong attraction to future development. It, I think, as you said, creates a stability over a long period of time, and an indication that investment is being made by the city, and will attract other investors to the area.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. I move for passage.
Thank you very much.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next is, does not have to do with Franklinton, but, and these are in opposite orders, but 2313-2012, to adopt the South London Neighborhood Plan Amendment as a guide for development, redevelopment, and planning of future public improvements. This particular piece of legislation, like the Franklinton Plan, you know, neighborhood plans provide for the document, the blueprint for development, for redevelopment, and for planning, and I know in discussions with the city staff and with the Department of Development, the amount of neighborhood input that came into the creation of this plan, or the amendment of this plan, that really is going to provide that blueprint and guidepost for development in South London. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, and just appreciate your work, as well as the work of the Department of Development. And I know this plan and the Franklinton Plan certainly have gotten the approval also. They've looked at it from the Health Department, the Columbus Public Health Healthy Places Program, and certainly think, are really appreciative of the input from the community to make sure that these plans would have those healthy places components, so the sidewalks, the community gardens, the walkable areas, and so to make sure that those communities can continue to try to move forward and be a little more healthier, and just appreciate the work that's been done, and appreciate this component being a part of both of those plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any other questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
2315-2012, to adopt the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan as an update to the 2003 Franklinton Plan, providing guidelines for development, redevelopment, and the planning for future economic improvements. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
2390-2012, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an agreement with the Central Ohio Community Improvement Corporation to receive up to $5,800,305 under the Move Ohio Forward Grant Program, to authorize the transfer of $3,189,418 from the Housing Preservation Fund to the General Government Grant Fund, to authorize the appropriation of $6,728,082.16 within the General Government Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. The money that we see here, and it's being authorized and appropriated, will go to demolitions in the city of Columbus under the plan that the council and the mayor have moved forward for the demoing of the worst of the worst, as well as other emergency demolitions to make our neighborhoods safer and stronger, to clean up our neighborhoods for the overall revitalization of some of the neighborhoods that have been hardest, hit hardest in the housing market. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Finally, is 2434-2012, to amend the Franklinton Community Reinvestment Area, Area G, for the purpose of expanding its boundaries by adding parcels to the existing Franklinton CRA, and making new construction of rental housing and eligible activity in the residential tax incentive program, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments on this particular piece of legislation? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And that wraps up development. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Technology Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. In the Technology Committee, we have one item. It's 2278-2012, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into a contract with G B A Master Series, now D B A Lucidity Incorporated, to implement an enterprise asset and work order management software system, inclusive of professional services and first year of annual support and maintenance fees at the cost of $455,295 with software maintenance and support available for another four years at a fixed fee of $43,000 per year. To authorize $322,000 for contingency funds, and $223,705 to pay for the Department of Technology staff time required for the project, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Department of Finance and Management Construction Management Capital Improvement Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Enterprise Asset and Work Order Management Software System, the city requires the system to better track inventory, assets, service requests, and work orders. The goal of this project is to improve service responsiveness and speed, and to reduce costs. The Department of Technology, in collaboration with the Department of Public Service, Finance, and Management, and also the Recreation Parks, will implement this new technology over the next year. In procuring this contract, there was In procuring this contract, there was a request for proposal, and they actually received nine proposals in response, and they did go through a scoring valuation through a committee. Tonight, they're asking for the contract to be extended in order to offer Lucidity the time to extend their offer because there was delay in the contract negotiation as originally planned. So the request to waive competitive bidding of the city codes was to make the amendment to adjust to that time delay that they had in negotiating the original contract with Lucidity. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in Technology Committee tonight, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Tonight, Public Safety and Judiciary, the following ordinance, 2275-2012, to authorize and direct the administrating and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into contract with the Archer Company for a salary and job classification study, and to authorize expenditure of up to $28,465 for services and to declare an emergency. The Court has many objectives for this study. Some include attracting and retaining qualified workers, providing fair and equitable salaries for all employees, and providing the Court with a salary structure that enables it to maintain a competitive position in central Ohio, and having a compensation system that's easy to use, understand, and maintain. The Court's current compensation system was established in the 1990s, and it's been 12 years since the structure was professionally evaluated. The Court expects to achieve a job classification and compensation system that ensures it is not overpaying positions, and, but it is not also hampering recruitment and/or retention efforts by underpaying. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In Public Service and Transportation, this evening, we have ordinance 2304-2012, to appropriate $1,001.77 within the Special Purpose Fund for the Division of Planning and Operations 2012 and 2013 Employee Award Program, and to authorize the Director of Public Service to expend these funds consistent with the program's award criteria. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, we have ordinance 2314-2012, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Columbus Asphalt Paving Incorporated for the Bike Way Development Bike Parking Shelter Project, to provide for the payment, construction, administration, and inspection services in connection with the project, to amend the 2012 C I B, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Street and Highway Geo Bonds Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $459,269 from the Streets and Highway Geo Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all we have in Public Service and Transportation this evening. May I move on to Public Utilities? In Public Utilities this evening, we have ordinance 1983-2012, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to execute those documents necessary to release unto Whitney Young Collaborative LLC, an Ohio Limited Liability Company, the city's sanitary sewer easement rights in the D B 3203, page 576, Recorder's Office, Franklin County, Ohio, to certain real property located at 743765 Mount Vernon Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43203. I would, if there are no questions or comments, I would first request to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And then move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 2010-2012, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and extend an agreement on behalf of the city of Columbus between Kurtz Brothers Central Ohio LLC and the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for the design, construction, and operation of the organic waste recovery and reuse system project, and to authorize the expenditure of $745,000 from the Sewage System Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. First, I would like to request to remove from the table and call roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Stand.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Then I would request to amend as submitted to the clerk and call roll by voice.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
President Ginther.
I move for passage and call roll by voice.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 2215-2012, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish blanket purchase orders for water treatment chemicals from current universal term contracts for the Division of Power and Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $3,517,900 from Water Systems Operating Fund. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 2297-2012, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to reimburse the Franklin County Engineers' Office for construction of a water main along Georgesville Road, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $1,400,000 from the Water Works enlargement voted bonds fund, and to amend the 2012 capital improvement budget for the Division of Power and Water. This piece of legislation represents the regional cooperation between the city and the county along Georgesville Road on the west side. The county engineer was making road improvements between West Broad Street and Sullivan Avenue, and as part of the project, the road was lowered and required a water main replacement. Instead of stalling the project inadvertently affecting the traveling public, the county bid out the entire job at once to maintain their scheduled timeline. This is another perfect example of coordination between intergovernmental agencies in order to be efficient and effective. I urge your support on this ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all we have in utilities this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Nothing else on our agenda for this evening. We do have a few non-agenda speakers we'll take momentarily. Nothing else to come before council. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Stand adjourned. We'll reconvene for regular meeting number 58, zoning at 6:30. Regular meeting number 58 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Your first reading is a 30-day legislation.
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the zoning committee, our first item is 2175-2012, to rezone 5335 North Hamilton Road, being 6.7 plus or minus acres located on the west side of North Hamilton Road, 590 plus or minus feet north of Thompson Road, from L M Limited Manufacturing in R Roll Districts to L M Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Cardinal Self-Storage LLC. The proposed use is self-storage. It receives the Development Commission recommendation for approval, and also the City Department recommendation for approval. I have no speaker slips. I would like to first to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
2310-2012, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312.13B driveway of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 5335 North Hamilton Road, to reduce driveway width concurrent with rezoning Z12-031. The applicant is Cardinal Self-Storage LLC. Proposed use is to concurrent counsel variance with rezoning request of Z12-031 to reduce driveway width. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
2363-2012, to rezone 3433 Ginder Road, being 4.96 plus or minus acres located on the west side of Ginder Road, 265 plus or minus feet north of Refugee Road, from L C 4 Limited Commercial District to L A R L D Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is New Village Communities LLC. Proposed use is multi-unit residential development. It receives the Development Commission recommendation for approval, and also the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That is all we have in zoning, but we also would like to have Councilmember Tyson making a little announcement.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. Just wanted to give our condolences to the family of Andre Slocombe, who was an employee for, in the Recreation and Parks Department, and he passed over the weekend, and he was a rec leader, I don't know, I think at Drive and Park and up at Linden, and just want to give us condolences to his family. Thank you so much.
And that is all we have in zoning committee. President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned.